All right, well, we are back and let's go ahead and move into our support services briefing. Mark, take it away.
Thank you, Commissioner Trask. First, I've got Diane to come talk to you about some lodging tax advisory committee positions.
Morning Commissioners. Sorry about my background. I haven't figured that one out, but I will. Um, I have lodging tax members, four of them that need reappointment for a two-year term. And then also we'd like to issue a news release because one of our spenders is retiring Pam Volt. So we need to solicit for applicants for a spender position.
I'm good. Yeah, all good with me. Congratulations to Pam.
Yeah, thanks.
And then the next item we have is the Memorial Hall Committee, which Commissioner Trask may want to speak to. But it's a committee we've had for years that basically meet every other month just to hear concerns of the users of Memorial Hall, the veterans. And it's been recommended, and we've checked with Tim Whitehead on dissolving that committee because there isn't really a lot that happens with it. And we do have the Veterans Advisory Board that meets monthly. And it's a lot of the same membership. And so if there's a problem with the Hall, I mean, of course, they can always call direct to the county. But they also can take their concerns to that committee. So we're asking the board to dissolve that Memorial Hall Committee.
Right. Now, at this time, they do have Kelly's direct line and also Jesse's direct line. So they're able to reach out if there are any issues with the building. They do, they're Johnny on the spot. They get there quickly and get their issues completed. Um, I have been added, I've noticed, to the VAB emails. And so if there are any issues with that, I can also, you know, pop into their meetings.
So Commissioner, are all of them as a group requesting that this be dissolved or?
Yep, yep. Everybody agreed and it's easier and all the issues can be resolved through the VAB or through direct contact.
Diane, wasn't there something in the bylaws or something that required this organization or this group and the way that it was chaired and everything like that?
There was in the original deed back from like 1929, it does talk about the committee, which has been changed over the years. So it's not exactly the same makeup. And that's why we did go to Tim Whitehead and asked him. And he felt since there's still a committee that the users can go to and it's veterans-driven, that we would be fine.
And I'm supportive. And by the way, Diane, I cannot wait for your seventies, retro seventies music to start popping on. I dig background.
Okay.
Thanks, Diane.
Thank you.
So Iron Man, that's what that is.
John, are you with us this morning? Talk about our radio day?
Yes.
Go for it.
Hear me now?
I can hear you now.
All right, sir. Today Commissioners, I'd like to give you a briefing on the O Day, which is a nationwide amateur radio exercise that we'd like to host in our region at Public Works, which I think is over the weekend of the 24th of June. Uh, what's important for us is that we just completed major uh updates to our emergent mobile emergency communications van. And we'd like to set up the entire uh unit to be able to test multiple channels. Currently, we can communicate with the federal government, with the state, as well as Department of Defense. So we'd like to set that up for this exercise and be able to do our amateur amateur connections as well. And this exercise will take place 24 hours. They'll be set up. It'll be outside against the fence line with Public Works. And we have local amateur radio people that'll be setting up as well that are part of our group. Uh, like I said, they will go 24 hours. The only thing they'll need to use is the restrooms and our volunteers will ensure that they'll be escorted in and out so that uh they won't be wandering around the building, only going into what they can. And then they'll have a picnic the closing day and we'll make sure that that's cleaned up at the end of that. Is there any questions?
No, I think that's cool.
It's actually a great thing. If we've learned anything over some of these disasters over the years, having those guys out there trained and ready to go and have as many as we can is one of the best things we could do.
Yeah, this is a great event and you got a, you got a good group of uh ham radio operators in the county. So definitely supportive.
And our objective is, is once we get that done, to finish the van up, bring it down and set it up so the Commissioners can go through it and see exactly what it will do. It's our final test before we do the closing of the walls within where the wiring is in the communication piece. So that should be ready within the next 30 days, which we've set up for you folks to review.
Sounds great.
That's all I have.
Thank you, John. Looking forward to it. I think that's pretty, when you, when you talk about how we communicate in, in certain events where all of our infrastructure has gone down, um, the normal infrastructure and cell phones may not be working or they may be overwhelmed. Having the ability to still communicate through ham radio is, is pretty amazing.
Yes, sir. And what we added to it was Wildland Fire. So now we can communicate with the US Forest Service as well as Department of Natural Resources, which was not one of the capabilities we had in the past.
You know, Mark, uh, somebody's been here for a long time. I can tell you that happens and it's not even big catastrophes. What happens even in traffic jams like in North Mason, for example, everybody starts getting on their phones. They overwhelm the system. So you can imagine what it would be like in a real catastrophe. You literally can't get through. You'll, you get a recording that says that your phone, your call cannot go through at this time. Uh, we get that a lot and during the bad times, it was a lot worse than that.
I remember um the, the earthquake back in, was it '01? And it was, I remember trying to, to call my family and make sure that everybody was okay and not being able to, to get through. So um definitely is, is a little scary, but that's why we prepare for these things. So good job, John.
And our objective is to put uh E911 in the Emergency Operations Center in case base con goes down, as well as one unit in the mobile van. And then what we want to do is repeat that process for North Mason to have the same mobile communications uh expectations up north.
And John and his team has helped them um do it all out of a trailer. Uh, in the past, I think we had an old van or, or something that was used or an old bus that, that wasn't very reliable. So super excited that it's uh now all done in a trailer and, and they're able to um really connect any vehicle to that trailer and take it to a place where the communication could be best served. So it's good, good deal. Good job. All right, Jen, talk to us about some financials.
Good morning Commissioners. I'm going to try to share my screen.
I love this part of our job now. Used to dread it, but now I always look forward to it when it's her turn to do that, what she does. While we're waiting, looking ahead, uh, it looks like our REIT is still staying right, you know, 38.6 uh. So we're real close to 40% still. Running backwards.
Hey, Commissioner Elland, I forgot to mention this earlier. Um, are you?
What the heck just happened? Oh, she's sharing.
Sharing. So hey, I um, I was talking to Senator McEwen last week and he mentioned that you had asked for a flag at the Capitol from the, for the county.
Yes.
He tried to get in touch with you, but I have it in my office if you want it. Or should I give it to Kelly or?
Awesome. Yeah, please give it to Kelly.
Okay.
Tell him, tell him thank you for me. I don't know how I couldn't get ahold of you. I will clear that up. I'll, I'll get my, my contact to his person or if you can get them. But no, that, I don't care. We got it. We got it. So that's awesome. Thank you.
All right, yeah. Mission accomplished.
Okay, I am ready. Sorry for that delay, everybody. So um, beginning on page two of the packet and just um a disclaimer, I did find some uh changes. So it's going to be different on the screen than what is in your packet, some of the, some of the pages. So um, I'll make sure that that gets updated before um it goes out on the website. So sorry about that. Um, so this is the revenue for current expense through April. We're looking at, um, we've received 16,477,122 dollars through the end of April. Um, for '23 compared to last year, 16,275,769 dollars. And we're at 39% of our budgeted um revenue in the general fund compared with last year, 40%. So looking pretty consistent there. Um, the treasures revenue detail. So this is the amount of revenue collected um in, in the treasures office through April. We've received 11,741,900 dollars compared to last year, um, 12,179 dollars, 79,873 dollars. Um, so looking pretty consistent there overall. On the expenditures through April in the general fund, we've expended 14,674,340 dollars this year compared to 13,158,817 dollars last year. So we're at 31% of our budgeted expenditures compared to last year, 30%. So again, looking pretty consistent. On the special fund, um, six-year recap, um, so looking at certain revenue statistics, we have um in community development, 818,489 dollars, which is over last year at this time, which is good. The property taxes are a little lower. That's because we um, we oh no, that wouldn't be, I was thinking it was because of the um diversion, but um that's in a different category. County road property taxes are up and that's becau, that is because we levy shifted.
Yeah.
Or we didn't levy shift. So that's why the current expenses are lo, lower than last year and then county road is higher. So the rural sales and use tax is up um over last year. The um homelessness prevention filings are down. Um, lodging tax is pretty consistent with last year, um, a little bit lower. And then REIT is down um 357,000 this year compared to 582 last year.
So yeah, we're running, while you're looking at us to point that, we're on about uh 40% different there. That's a lot. But uh, can you explain to me how on the criminal uh justice taxes and entitlements, how that keeps going up a little bit? Where does that come from?
Um, that is, um, and I'll have to do some more research. I believe that is, I don't even want to speculate right now.
Okay, it, it makes me feel better. If you don't know what, what it's based on, then I, then I wasn't expecting to either.
I can't remember off the top of my head. Um, so I will go back and, and research that and get back to you.
Thank you.
So it is, it is sales tax generated, correct, Jen?
The um detention and correction services?
The criminal justice tax and entitlements. Isn't that related to sales tax?
Oh, um, yeah, sorry. I was, I was thinking it was detention and correction. Sorry.
I know where that one is. I'd love to get back to 550,000 we used to do.
The criminal justice taxes and entitlements, yes, that is um sales tax related and that comes off of here. That is the criminal justice um tax there. That is also the uh criminal justice for counties, um adult court costs, um for juvenile, the marijuana enforcement and the um DUI, um other criminal justice. Um, so I can research exactly where those um come from if you want more detailed.
No, I, that, that's what I needed is what you just showed me.
Okay.
So it's actually more than just sales tax. Thank you for putting that out. I appreciate that.
Okay, any other questions or comments on that?
Thank you.
Welcome. So um the detailed um county sales tax, so in April, we received 600 and close to 676,000, um, which is above last year, 648,000 for the same month in '22. Um, every month so far this year, we have received more than we did in the previous year. So we are projected to receive close to 9.6 million. Um, if we receive exactly the same amounts from May through December of this year as we did last year. So um most likely we'll receive over 9.6 million if the trend continues that we're receiving more sales tax um each month than we have in the previous year. On the um six-year financial recap, we have um cash in the general fund of 28.5 million. And then you can see all of the um reserves up above. We have an unreserved cash, 10,700,000. And this is probably the most we're going to have all year um is at the end of April because of property taxes. So we'll start to spend that down throughout the rest of the year. Um, again, we're at 39% of our budgeted revenue in the general fund compared to 31% in expenditures. And then we have all of the special fund cash balances here. And we have a total of um 59,232,640 in cash and other and special funds. Which is consistently a large increase over the previous five years. Last year, we were at 43,522 and we um, we did have in the American Rescue Plan Act Fund, um, this year we have 7 million. Last year we had close to five. So um, so that's a big chunk of this 59 million down here. Um, moving on to the motor pool summary, we have expended a total of 494,000 through April. Um, compared to last year, we had expended 530,000. And um, a big piece of the, the decrease in costs is the um, the capital outfits. We had more vehicles being outfitted at this point last year. So pretty consistent there. On the special funds revenue, we have received um 20,107,745 dollars through the end of April. Um, compared to last year, 19,718,962. Um, we're at 34% of our budgeted revenue in the special funds this year compared to 27% last year.
Hey, on the special funds cash balances uh and the like, when you list the equipment rental revolving fund, that is strictly the public works one, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. On the um special funds, the expenditures, we have expended through April, 14,486,155 dollars compared to um last year, 14,278,340. So um, very consistent there. Um, we're at 18% of our, our expenditures this year, our budgeted expenditures compared to 17% last year. So any other questions or, or comments about the April financials?
Nope, great job.
Thank you. Okay, so is there anything that I need to get back to you on? I need to get back to you on the detail of criminal justice or no?
No, I'm good. I, you got me what I needed when you broke it down like that. I could see where it all came from. That's all I needed.
Okay, great. Thank you. I, I'm going to move on to my next briefing then. And that is the um, the draft request for supplemental appropriations and amendments to the first budget amendment for 2023. And that hearing, um, we're uh hoping to do that on, on June 20th. And so these are all of, all of the amendments that are requests from departments at this point. Um, we are changing the cash balances to actual cash at January 1st. And so um, I know it looks odd in the first entry to see a negative expenditure change of 2.452 million, but that's just um due to um funds that were projected to have a higher cash balance than they actually did. The American Rescue Plan Act was one of those. Um, I wanted to make sure that we had everything um planned to spend. I wanted to project a um higher fund balance than there actually was going to be on purpose. Um, just so that we could make sure we, we had that budget authority to spend. So um, that's why that looks really odd. Um, so we're decreasing the um, the expenditures by 2.4 million in the, the American Rescue Plan Act. So that's the majority of that. Um, we also have in the scope fund um a negative expenditure amount of 5,963 dollars and not negative expenditure, but we're removing that authority from, from the budget by adjusting to the actual cash balance. Um, the other one is the uh Fund 199, which is the um Island Lake Management. Uh, their cash balance was actually lower than, than projected. And so that um may, means that we had to reduce our expenditures by 9,024. Belfair Sewer, um, we are increasing their, their revenue so that they have an uh ending fund balance of zero. And I believe um that was due to grant funding that um was built out in '22 and not received until '23. So there's 819,619 dollars in revenue that we're adding to 2023 so that their ending fund balance in Belfair ends at zero. So um, so those were kind of the oddities in the, the cash balances. Any questions on that? I know it's kind of confusing. You can always talk to me about it afterwards also. So the other requests we have that are not listed on here, I, I had um forgotten to add a request from the Sheriff's Office to add um revenue and expenditure of uh 24,617 dollars for WASPAC training. And so I want to request to add that into the amendment as well. And there's also a um, a CTG, um, the Corrections Techno, Technology Group. Um, I would like to request to add to the Sheriff's Office jail budget, 68,610 dollars for um, for a maintenance contract on the jail security system. So this one, we had met um, so Support Services, Sheriff's Office and Facilities had met in January and talked about adding this bill to the Sheriff's Office budget.
Going through a car wash. You're reading out my windows? I'm gonna mute here. It's gotta be loud in there.
Much better.
And so this, this bill was not budgeted in either um the facilities budget or in the Sheriff's Office budget. So I would like to request to add this to the Sheriff's Office um jail budget as a repair and maintenance. Um, and keep that consistent moving forward since it's always been, I guess, kind of a, a question as to who pays for this service. And um because it's a, you know, it's benefiting the jail to um have their security system there. Um, I mean, I guess it, it benefits all of us really, but um, but you know, it's more specific to the, the jail. So I would like to request to add that to this amendment as well. And then the last thing that I, I may bring back to you next Monday for this for this briefing is um, on the Superior Court, they had a couple of salary changes that um Paula and I have been working through. And so I, I just wanted to give you a heads up that that may be coming back on, on Monday. And then um, we would add it to the Tuesday meeting if, if that's okay.
Sounds good.
Great. Okay, thank you. So that's all that I have if there's no questions or, or comments on any of, of the amendments.
Just so people know, we, we have to mute ourselves every now and then because they're washing our windows and it's rather loud.
Doing a great, doing a great job too. There's a little visual so you know, we're not, we're not just playing weird sound effects in our, in our office, so.
I had to go pull up my, my shades real quick to see if I could shock them for a second. It was just too good to pass up.
Yeah, yeah, but they are doing a great job.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks, Jennifer.
All right, Mary, you want to talk just about our collective bargaining agreement for community family health?
Yeah, no personnel policy today. Woo hoo. So I wanted to um move for approval um of the January 23 to December 26 collective bargaining agreement for Teamsters Union Local 252 Mason County Community Family Health. Um, the exclusive representatives, we reached an agreement. Um, I feel like this was a really collaborative process. Um, and I really appreciate working with the union on this. And so um, it's on file with the clerk's office and attached to your packet. And I think my second item, which is not loading, is for the Deputy Prosecutors Group. Same thing. It's my stuff not loading. There it is. This one is also a January 23 to December 26, um CBA for Mason County and Deputy Prosecuting Attorneys, Woodworkers Local Lodge W38 for the IAM. Same thing, exclusive reps worked on this. And I again, feel like it was very collaborative and um we're having some really great conversations and collaboration with the unions at this time. And so wanted to move both those forward for um approval on the next agenda.
Excellent work. Um, definitely supportive of moving both of these forward. And um, of course, we, we couldn't do it without collaboration with our partners on the labor side. So credit to them for being willing to, to actually negotiate and get a deal done for their, their employees. And I think it's one we can all be confident and move forward.
Yep, I agree. A, a great teamwork and it's exciting to see all of these moving forward.
Yeah, Paul echo everything. An absolutely great job. Some pass on the backs to all of you guys. We're awful blessed this, this time around and uh, everybody in our county is benefiting from it. So thanks again.
All right, that's all I've got. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Mary. And now we have Board of Equalization.
Yep, Becky. Well, Becky, we can't hear you. Still can't hear you.
Wonder if this is the VPN issue?
Maybe Mary can.
Yeah, I can hop in. I know, I know sometimes the text is a little different, but um, so this is for appointment of Kevin Freigerberger, who's um a member, and then David Mallory, an alternate member, um, to put them on the Mason County Board of Equalization for a two-month interim period until July 31 of 2023. Basically because we need some time while the news release is put into circulation to fill uh both the regular and the alternate positions. Um, the per diem of $100 is already budgeted and the news release is slated for May 23rd to June 6th of '23. And so the requested action is just the approval to appoint those two members as interim.
Sounds good to me.
Agree.
Me.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Thanks, Becky.
So I'm looking for, okay. So I I think on in your packet, you'll see I provided an update on Substitute House Bill fourteen sixteen, which is the Department of Natural Resources Land Transactions, Revenue Distributions, and Land Transfer Program. So at our last regular commissioner meeting, there were some questions that came up regarding changes that they've recently made to timber trust lands. I believe that this is the bill that was that Commissioner Netherton was was asking about. So not to say that I'm an expert on it, but just reviewing the summary of the bill, it appears that what they were doing was trying to create an opportunity when you had underperforming timberlands. So these are these are trust lands that really were not producing timber and that there was a better, higher use for that land. Then it gives the Department of Natural Resources the ability to sell the land. The value of the timber would go to the the normal distribution of where that comes. And then the value of the land actually would go back into an account that DNR controls to, of course, they're washing my window now. It would it would it would go into an account that they're able to actually use to purchase additional land that could be put into the transfer program. And the specific concerns that existed there were when they actually went out and purchased additional land to put in the transfer program, it may not be in the same county in which they sold the original land. And I didn't see a fix in the bill specifically for that. I do know that as a interested party or individual, a party that actually has something to do with the land that's there and they're managing it for us, we would be involved in those discussions with the Department of Natural Resources. But that's that's kind of what I viewed that House Bill fourteen sixty to be. And if you have questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them. If I can't, then I could definitely find somebody that could.
Right, that's my understanding of the bill as well. We we did talk about the bill at the Legislative Steering Committee meetings. And so that I'm assuming that your assumption is correct.
I I I actually think that this is different. So I think the I think what they were requesting was actually a proviso in the capital budget, not a not a bill. So I think
Maybe we need to do a little bit more research on this.
Me.
While he's looking, because it is important that we have this correct, while he's looking, I want to bring up something that occurred. As you know, I stayed and I talked with a lot of them. They brought up an issue that they felt had had come up that where the agenda for the sale of this timber was moved forward and moved up and did not go through the proper process. And I had let Mark know I was prepared to come forward and ask for us to ask at least for a letter of delay. But I predicated that on them delivering to me some type of documentation showing that that had occurred. I never received anything, so I want to just let you know I'm not requesting anything at this point. Just because somebody, I I want to believe people, but they have to show me. And since they were not able to give me a documentation showing that it was changed, moved up, or they were denied their their rights, I I can't ask the commission to do anything different than what we're already doing in regards to that.
I'll also add I'll also add on to that. One of the things that I was actually pretty disappointed in in the group for not mentioning was that a week prior, they had filed an injunction in Superior Court to prevent the the sale and harvest from going through. And I think I'm not saying that I my comments would have been different on Tuesday had I known that there had actually been legal action taken by the group. I probably at this point would like to see that process play itself out before commenting any further or taking any further action as a legislative body.
I was a little surprised that I found out in the paper as well, considering I spoke with them for quite a long time after that meeting and it never came up once. But I read about it in the paper and was, I will admit, I was a bit disappointed that there was no conversation after the meeting with them in regards to that.
Mark, I forwarded you to your email the proviso language for carpet sequestration forests.
Thank you. I'll take a look at that.
And I also just, I think for, you know, the one thing that I will say is I I think this goes. I think, you know, we sent a letter to the Board of Natural Resources earlier this year about the the carbon sequestration process generally. And so having not received new information necessarily, I I I'm not sure I'd be comfortable with changing my position or the counties on the DNR's carbon sequestration process.
Well, as I said, I actually went and and I asked for the numbers. Now afterwards, Ms. Gale did challenge my numbers. But again, I I called the schools directly. And then after that, I actually had another message that said that they were wrong in the numbers, that it was greater than the amount they they had said, that it was actually one hundred and ninety-eight plus more from the federal. And then I'm positive because I said, and Jennifer, our own staff showed me the numbers and where it's at. We circled it, went over, separated out the other numbers. This specifically was those timber trust dollars. That's a lot of money. And so I haven't changed either. But the only thing I was thinking there may be an opportunity, as they said, was asking for them to make sure they did the process right, to give me an opportunity. But I'm not, I never got anything. So I'm not asking for that. I want to make that clear. And I'm sure they're out there listening. They need to know that in order for you expect your representatives to do these type of things, you have to produce the documents to show us so that we can move forward to our other commissioners and have that discussion. And we can't do it just on your say-so. You have to give us something. So.
Well, I I did watch the the DNR process and their hearings and listen to the testimonies from everyone that was in the room and others that were online. And I think the DNR did a great job listening. I think the board did a good job in their decision. And and I do trust that they that they do their due diligence and make sure that the public has the opportunity to respond and to participate. So I as far as DNR, I think the DNR did their their due diligence because that room was packed. And we heard I heard through their recordings and and through the the meeting that that people's voices were heard.
Great, thank you. I'll I'll look into this. I appreciate the additional information, Commissioner Shuji. So that was all that I had on my actual agenda for you today. But there is something that I'd like to ask the commissioner, since we're in briefings. We currently have a policy that requires us to come before the board to put somebody on administrative leave and get approval from the board. And periodically, we may have issues arise where we need to address it immediately. Would the commissioners feel comfortable if I was able to address those and then bring back to the commissioners the the reasons as to why?
I don't think I understood what you said. I'm sorry, Mark.
So 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 the once in a while, we have issues arise. We're an individual employee, whether they're in crisis or whether there's an issue that is came up, that that we would like to place them on administrative leave. And currently, within our personnel rules, that requires the board county commissioners' approval to do so. So I don't want to authorize something before I get approval from the board, but in certain circumstances, we may be required to do it immediately and then come back to the board after the fact. And so I was just wanting to to.
I get it. Now, my opinion is we have a manager now or an administrator. We didn't have one when we were doing the others. A part of the administrator's job is to be able to react fast to different things that are going on. I just think that we need to add it to a policy and get it before us so that there is no confusion for the future, if that's going to be the case. Because if we have a written saying one way, we have to follow it. But let's just do a quick change on that.
Great.
Yeah, I, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I I completely agree. I think that's well within your purview. And I think the policy has to reflect the practice going forward. And so yeah, certainly certainly supportive policy change, that effect.
Yeah, as am I. I'm supportive as long as and I think we just need to see that that section. Not the entire.
You want all three hundred and forty-nine pages, Commissioner?
Come on, I knew you liked reading it.
So HR's way of. With that comment.
It's it's HR's way of ensuring that we that we're really familiar with all of our personnel policies. So it's like, I changed something in here. Read it all and find what I changed.
She spent twenty minutes apologizing for it the last time. So I knew we were gonna see her face on this one.
If I get that one more time, I'm gonna file a hostile work.
Yeah, I look forward to seeing it. Let's let's make it happen. And I'd rather see it sooner than later. It's something that I think we should, it's not complicated. Sounds like we have no issue with it. Let's get it before us so we can get it on the next agenda.
Great, thank you. And that's all I had for you.
I had something for you, Mark. Just a reminder, you and I spoke in regards to pull tab. I want to still come forward some way with looking if we can maybe get closer to what we're doing in the other communities to help make sure these businesses do survive.
Absolutely. So I actually reached out to the treasurer on that. And let me pull it up real quick here because she provided me some good information.
I don't know the other commissioners. Have you updated them on our conversation or?
I don't believe that I have. So if you could do that while I'm looking it up, that'd be great.
Okay, I can do it that way, too. So I had a business owner that contacted me in North Mason that is a bar owner and they do pull tabs and the like. With the pull tags, a certain amount of money, the taxes go to different things. For ours, it goes just into our our general fund of the income for the sheriff's department. But the thing is, is some of it's pretty onerous and pretty hard to be ten percent certain amounts of gross and stuff like that. And it makes it real hard for them to to make ends meet with some of it. Kitsap County has dropped it down to three percent. And I'd like to see about us matching what some of the other counties have done as times have changed. And that's all that was. So I brought it forward for Mark to look into to see what the money is used for, if it's goes specifically for anything. Because I don't want to change anything if it actually has a pocket that has to be in without a long conversation. And see what else is happening around in our other communities so they can be competitive.
Thank you for reminding me. And I did pull it up and the the commission does have the ability to set the percentage. So we currently have it set at five percent. We receive just short of a hundred thousand dollars of revenue in this on an annual basis.
That's a net. There there was two options. There's a ten percent growth, five percent in net. And we we settled on five percent in net.
Okay.
And so Commissioner Netherton, you're saying that most counties are doing three percent instead of five?
Yes, two and three. But I understand Kitsap County, which is one that we're in direct competition with basically right above us, didn't go down all the way, but they went down to three. And the question is, 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 are they doing, what percentage are they doing of gross also? So we I'm not prepared to go forward with the request at this time. I need to see what it is because I believe they have the two options, gross and and net.
And we currently have it set on gross.
Okay.
So.
So that must be what they're talking about then, then is they've dropped it to two percent on gross or three percent on gross. Other counties dropped it down to two, but I'm not prepared to go. I just want to be closer to what we have for our neighbor. I'm not prepared to find to cherry pick the smallest one around us and go there.
So I will, I will, I will do a little bit of research with with Lisa and Jen on what the impact of that would be to the revenue. So the revenue associated with this, I believe Commissioner already stated when I was looking it up, that it's required to be used for public safety purposes. So this is a revenue that comes into our general fund and it's it's utilized to offset some of our public safety costs, which are the largest expenditures within our general fund budget. So I will, I will go ahead and and work with them to calculate what that impact would be if we went from five percent to three percent gross and then bring it back before the board.
And if you wouldn't mind just comparing it with Kitsap County and see what theirs would look like, this way we could have a decision point whether we want to do that or make any changes.
All right. That's all I had for you. Anything else from Commissioner Shuji or Commissioner Trask for me?
Nope, just look forward to more discussion on that. Good issue to take on.
All right. So Dave, go for it.
Nope, it's not Dave.
You get him out of here.
Yeah, community development, then public health. I mean, per the calendar.
I just have a short, short update, just a monthly update on permits. So I first just start permit issuance and permit intakes for the month of April. And then you've got comparisons from January through April. And then in your full packet, you should have the full list from back to twenty nineteen. And then on the permit turnaround times, I just compared this month, this year to last April. And I took out all of the outliers and I looked up the ones that seemed really, you know, a a long timeframe, looked them up in Smart Gov and saw that those that were had a lot of days compared to the average were due to some deficiencies and other things from either one of the three departments, whether it was environmental health, building, or the planning department. And so I took those out and just looked at the average. And our average turnaround time went down from sixty-nine days last year to forty-two days this year. And you could see, you know, if you look at the daily or each individual permit type, they range in there. And I I did ask Josh to join me today from the Building Department. He's out this week on vacation. I think he's in Sitka, Alaska fishing. So I didn't make him show up this morning to go into the details if people had questions about, you know, are inspectors and plans examiners were training the inspectors so they're not just going out in the field? It's when they are have office time, they are able to do some reviews of different permit types. And so we are going through some of the permit types quicker than others. And I think we, you know, some of the commissioners have expressed interest in the past of looking at those easier types. You know, the manufactured homes are are a relatively simple review and and doing those on a little more quicker basis. So. Anyone has any questions?
This is great. Excited about the the permit time going shorter and shorter, too.
Yes. And then I'm also happy to announce that we have a permit text starting tomorrow. So the permit texts have been down for just a couple of months now, what since Ari and Pacey left us. And so Annie Wilson will be joining Amber and Jeannie in the Permit Center. So that'll help with Amber and Jeannie have busy desks, so that'll be very helpful.
I believe you stole Annie from us and it was quite still.
Yes, I am. Yes. Very happy about it.
I'm keeping her in the county. I'm super excited. She's a she's a she'll be a great addition over there.
Yeah, we're excited.
She brings great energy wherever she goes, and that's always a valuable tool.
For sure.
Yeah, but we do remember.
Yeah.
All right, commissioners, any questions for Kel?
Yeah, I have I have an item that I wanted to talk to Kel and and the commission about and get some get some feedback or consensus on. So I probably remember the issues in Tenino a few months ago with the sex offender housing that was proposed under the least restrictive housing program that the state operates. And so these LRAs are, they're kind of, they're kind of able to be done pretty broadly. But I wanted to have a conversation with Kel and Planning and and the commission about us taking a look at our zoning requirements for facilities that are going to house, you know, sexually violent sex offenders. And and looking at some buffers that we can maybe put into our our code, some hearing requirements that we could put Uh, and, and looking at some, uh, buffers that we can maybe put into our, our code, um, some hearing requirements that we could put into our code. Um, I just wanted to have a conversation about either getting support from the commission to move forward from that or asking at least, um, you know, what are our options available to us at the local level? Um, I think a lot of the issues were created by the state when it came to, um, you know, locating that facility there, but a lot of the pressure came on the county. Um, in, in terms of having a response or wanting to do something. And so, uh, fortunately, nothing is being proposed here. We're at least nothing that we're, we've been made aware of, but, um, now seems like the right time to maybe get something on our, on our books, uh, in order to provide for additional buffers. Um, and provide for, uh, uh, additional public engagement in those, in those situations should, uh, the state want to, um, move, uh, move those folks into our community. So putting that out there, once maybe feedback from the commission or Kel.
I'll go, I'll go for feedback on that one. Uh, yes, 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 yes. In case there's any confusion, yes. Let's, uh, start on it. Having this stuff in place. Granted, we have to fix and we have to be ready for anything that comes up to take care of every, every person and make sure they don't leave behind. But we have a responsibility to make sure that everybody else is around them, uh, uh, you know. We have a right to, to not have them dictate or, or direct how we are gonna have our lives and spend our lives and be protected. The only way we can do that is if we put the things, policies and controls in place before the action, not during or after, or we would be in lawsuits through the process, uh, and anger within the community. I know that's a lot though to put on you Kel, because, uh, you know, trying to find a zone, a location to even handle something like that, that's not a good place to put you in. But we have to look at the best of the options that we have, just to make sure we have something in place. So please, yes.
Well, and I think it's, it's much easier to be proactive than it is to be reactive. And so I would much rather be ahead of the game on this one than being behind the, the eight ball, so to speak. So absolutely. And then whatever you need from me, reach out. I'm just across the street, so.
Copy and paste Kel. There's gotta be some good ones out there somewhere.
So, um, that, that's a great point. It's not, nothing that was on my radar. So, and just like you guys were saying, it is much easier to be proactive than reactive. And sometimes when you're in reactive mode, you don't have time, um, even to do a simple moratorium, because it's too late when something's already been proposed. And our current codes don't address anything like that, um, specifically. So, um, you know, it might be something, you know, I'd be happy to talk details with Kevin and then we can bring back for a briefing, but just keep in mind, we are starting our comp plan update. I'll be briefing about, um, NRFP next, next Monday. Uh, and so this is good timing and maybe it's something we do wanna consider, um, a moratorium while we draft those regulations so that we don't get ourselves in a, uh, situation where we're having to react to a proposal we're not ready for.
Yes and no. The only reason why I say no is I am hoping that you'll do more than just take on what we just brought up, because that same zoning should be considered when it comes to drug rehab, to mental health facilities. Uh, cause all of them will have a different effect in the community that it's, it's placed in the middle of. All of them are possible and the state's always looking at different options on what to do with some of those. Here recently, I've had some calls from the North Mason community about, uh, uh, rehab centers and, uh, mental health facilities. So it's, the time is ripe for all of that to, to be considered. So I don't know.
Yep, I look forward to a conversation between Kevin and Kel and, or Commissioner Shute and, and Kel and, and see, um, what the next steps could be or should be.
Great, thank you.
No, no, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. I, that was an important one, I.
All right, anything else for Kel? Kel, if you'll just get back with me, see if you can reach out to a constituent and see what we can do for him. Appreciate that a ton. All right, Dave, now it's you.
I'll start there. I'm so ready to go. So, uh, we just have one short item and I will turn it over to Ian.
Morning commissioners. Um, today we have a briefing item for, uh, food inspection software. We have a current system that, uh, currently doesn't really allow us to do paperless food inspections. It's been one of our goals for a long time. And we would like to, uh, hire a, uh, I guess subcontract out that, um, that work from Inspect2Go. Uh, it'll cost us approximately seven thousand three hundred per year. Um, and this will be paid for by the FPHS money. Um, the nice thing with this service is if we, if we go with this, residents will be able to look up any restaurant they want. They'll be able to see all of the inspection reports for the soy. So it's our really good, um, tool for, for people to, to use if they're curious about what their, um, how their local restaurants are doing. Uh, I've had it looked over by, uh, Tim Whitehead and he says the contract looks good. Um, there's, uh, five-year language in the contract, but it's not us being locked in for five years. It's kind of a, a price agreement for five years and then it can get, uh, reviewed at that time. If we decide to terminate or if they decide to terminate without cause, I think it's a hundred days or a hundred and ten days, something like that, that, uh, that would be the delay. So it's, we're not locking ourselves in for, for something for some long period of time. If this doesn't work out or if we find something better for, if we decide to, um, change services. Yeah, and this will allow us to do fully electronic inspections. Right now, our inspectors go out in the field and they fill out all these papers and they do their inspection. And then they come back in the office and they put in all that exact same information into our smart up system and it really caused a lot of duplicate work and it'll have a huge savings for us to, to do that process one time. Uh, so I think the, I think the, the price is worth it to, to save us all that staff time from the duplicate data entry. Uh, but if the commission's okay with it, I'd like to move it to Action General for approval, um, next Tuesday.
We did some of that with, uh, uh, the buildings and stuff to be able to save on time and inputting this stuff right from the field. It only makes sense we can do it here and that cost does not seem to be too exorbitant, so I'm supportive.
I am as well.
Ian, how lo- how long have they been around? They're not gonna be here this year and gone next year, are they?
And, Inspector Go has been around a while. I, I don't know the answer for how long it's been business off the top of my head. I'd have to, I'd have to research that, but, um, a lot of jurisdictions use them and from the demos that we've seen, um, they were, they, they kind of showed off this one city in Ohio where you can go and you can look up all the inspection reports and everything that they have there. Um, it, it works really well. The, it's, it's very intuitive and they don't have to type everything either. It has voice to text ability. So an inspector can, can dictate their observations. Uh, now there may be some circumstances that won't be good where, you know, it's like employee, you red shirt, you know, red hair, blue dress, touched raw chicken and then, you know, felt all over their face and then, you know, served a salad or something. So I probably don't wanna do that all the time, but, um, there's a, there's a lot of, uh, nice features for efficiency that, that should make this go pretty quickly.
And we've learned already, Commissioner, that, um, you can, you can buy in with a longstanding client only to have them sell it right in the middle of the process of ins- uh, implementing it.
Yeah.
And leave us saying, dude. Dude's solutions, remember?
Yeah, no, I thi- I think it's a great idea. And I think, uh, wha- what I really liked about it was that anyone could go online and look at the inspection report. So I, I think that, that's awesome. That's a good feature.
Yeah, yeah, it's really great.
Okay, and it can come out, out of the, which budget was it?
Uh, F, the FPHS funding that we've received from the state.
Right, I like that too.
Yeah.
Right, I'm good. You've got three out of three.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thanks, Ian.
That's all I have.
So Dave, I got.
Anything for Dave?
Yeah, I do. I got contacted by a group, uh, up in Beards Cove and the like, they're putting together a team to go and clean the, the streets and the parks and stuff, uh, looking for needles and the like. Uh, they are requesting three sharps boxes and, uh, how to get rid of them. So, uh, I told them if, if the county wants to apply, I'll supply the sharps boxes. Uh, but if we can, I'd rather you do it. And could you please get ahold of me about how to get rid of them, what they can do, how to connect with you guys to get rid of the sharps?
Yeah, it's, it's really easy. We actually can even use like a two-liter bottle. So we've got that, so.
All right, anything else?
Should I have them get ahold of you personally or you, you get ahold of Melissa? What, what would you like?
Let me, and then I'll just ask them to where they need to go.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yep.
Dave, how, how do you recommend that they pick them up?
Well, we actually have a brochure and what I'll do is I'll get that out to everybody on, on how to deal with, uh, uh, when you find a syringe, uh, we have, we have some, um, we, in fact, I'll, I'll stick that on the, on the Facebook page and on the website as well. So, um, it'd be good to put that back out there again.
I remember when we cleaned up the park in Belfair, that little tiny, uh, one on the corner, the transit uses. Uh, we collected well over two hundred needles.
Yep.
That's a very small area, but that was an area where they came together. So I can be sure, assured if they're gonna go through the communities picking them up, there's gonna be a lot.
Sad and unfortunate in so many ways.
Yeah. Actually, what, what, what we are seeing is we're seeing a reduction in the use of syringes and an increase in the use of, of smoking of, of, uh, opioids.
Yeah.
So, um, it's, it's changed the dynamic a little bit, but you'll still see them out there.
All right, anything else commissioners? All right, Dave, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thanks.
All right, Loretta, you're up.
Okay, commissioners, first up, we have, um, a request to extend an inter-local agreement between the county and Kitsap County. And this agreement is for the disposal of household hazardous waste. And we've had this agreement in effect for some time. And we're currently asking to extend that agreement and provide for a one-year extension, um, again, after the twenty-four expiration.
Sounds good to me, commissioners.
Okay. Yep.
All right, great. It's going before Kitsap and then when they're complete, we will bring that back before commissioners for, for execution.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And thanks to Kitsap County. Our next item, commissioners, is a request to authorize two adopt a road agreement. And we've had applications from Jim and Brenda Jensen. And they are requesting to adopt a portion of Bear Creek Dewato Road from mile post three point one five to five point one five. And we also have a request from Ginger Canyon in Chelsea to adopt a portion of Sunnyside Road from mile post point two to three point four five. We're requesting approval to execute those agreements.
I think that's exciting and it's neat to have people from our own teams out there adopting roads.
Yes.
Agreed. Great. Supportive of both.
Same.
Okay, great. So that is it as far as our action item requests, commissioners. We also talked a little bit about the fact that we've got, uh, Public Works Fill the Truck event coming up on May twenty-fourth and just want to share a little bit more detail about that. So the locations this year are the, um, Credit Union and then also the corner of Seventh and Eighth and Railroad Avenue. And then also in Belfair, the Belfair QFC. And donations will be going to Saints Pantry, Turning Point and the North Mason Food Bank.
I gotta get that out. I forgot. He sent it to me. I'll share it, uh, hopefully the commissioners will all share it and they were very successful last time.
Oh, yeah, wildly successful, very fun event and very appreciative of fo- of, of course, our folks volunteering and all of the great donations from the community. So looking forward to a, another successful year this year.
And if you could send us a link that we can just shoot out or let us know if it's on the Facebook page and we'll shoot that, share that as much as we can too.
Yeah, will do. All right, and then other than that, um, let's see. Mike's out and about in the field today, but he left me some quick Cliff Notes about what was wrapped up project-wise. I know we talked about the front street paver for the city and then also completed some work on Greatview or began work, excuse me, Greatview Loop shoulder work. And I believe Mike also mentioned that we had a pre-construction meeting last week for the Harstein Island Bridge project. And that work will, is planned to begin at the end of this month. So definitely looking forward to that. And commissioners, if that's something of interest to you, happy to uh, schedule possibly a, a road trip for you to take a look at that work. It's a little bit different method from what we've used here in the past here in the county. And so, yeah, might be a, a fun thing to take a look at. And if not, we can plan a video tour if you're interested.
I'd, I'd be interested to take a road trip.
Yeah. And then Sunnyside Road, we're getting ready to complete the chip seal for the rest of that road this year and finally got the, the culvert alignment straightened out and did it in a manner that did not require relocating a giant pedestal for a PUD. So happy to get that accomplished and keep chugging away on that project. Old Belfer Highway, continuing work again there and getting ready to get that, uh, paved. So we'll be awaiting bid openings for that and move along with paving on old BH. We are working on road standards. I think you've heard us visit about that a bit and wrapping up coordination with Department of Community Development and making sure that we're all on the same page between our codes. And Mike is out taking a look at the Tohuya Post Office Bridge and the Schoolhouse Culvert. Um, so that's what he's taken, reviewing in the field today and getting ready to, to complete those projects or keep moving those projects forward. Razor Road, we did meet with the property owner last week about the right-of-way and our talks are continuing to go well and it looks like we're moving ahead on, on that as well in terms of securing a, a corridor through that particular piece of property. And last item, Crew's going to be widening shoulders on Lynch and then getting ready for paving out there. So that's what we're up to on the road operations side right now.
You guys are super busy.
Yep, they are moving along for sure. Taking advantage of all this great weather, right?
Right, right. Well, then it also looks like on July twelfth, you'll have the TIPCAT community outreach meeting at the Shelton Civic Hall.
Yes, that is correct. Yeah, so, um, our next TIPCAT meeting, we'll be talking a little bit more about the, the outreach for that, so that we're having some good participation.
Very cool.
Yeah, uh, Richard's on vacation this week, commissioners, so we, uh, will be planning to brief you on water and sewer rates when he gets back next week. And then also we've got a placeholder, uh, to talk about alternatives for Trails Road. And get some feedback from commissioners on which direction you're thinking you'd like for us to, to leap in our recommendations.
That sounds good, commissioners. Do you have anything for Loretta?
I ha- I have a few different things. Uh, Loretta? I have a few different things. Loretta, Ken Van Baschirk has been with us, and he spoke at our last commission meeting. We need to get a update on what we're doing. I know the commission came together and said that we want to try to move that needle to get that right in, right out up there by McDonald's. What I'd like to ask for you is perhaps an update, if not an action or strategy discussion to tell us what you're going to do and how we're going to go to getting this done and getting it behind us on the one. The next is some folks have been getting a hold of me from Trails in Lake. They said they contacted you, but they're saying that all that work, remember, we had that catastrophe up there last year or so? And they're saying this turned to dust. There's a lot of issues up there. I'm going to go up this next week and take a peek. If you don't mind, could you send somebody up before me to look and see if it's being damaged like they say it is? They say that it's pretty bad out there still from from, remember, we have that tar issue? Or the the oil issue that occurred out there? Maybe they haven't contacted you. That would be the first time people have told me that they contact you, talk to you, and your response when they never you've never heard from them. So.
Yeah, I have not personally heard from anyone from Trails and.
Yeah, well, they're they're getting together with some of that stuff. So if you wouldn't mind sending some. The next one, I got approached by somebody who said we were doing some work up at the very end of the Tiger Lake Road. And I said, are you talking Kitsap side? They said, no, it was Mason County that did the work. They didn't finish. And there's some issues up there. They just never came back. So would you look into that? And the next one is just, and I'm sure we've all thought about it a few times, and I don't even know what to do about it. But those bioluminescent road stripes, you know, you've seen them, we've all seen been sent different things in regards to the glow-in-the-dark striping. I'd be curious to see what they are doing in Australia, what those prices look like if we were to try and do it with some of our darker roads like Harstein Island and life that doesn't have any white stripe on the sides. Commissioners, have you ever seen that stuff yet, constituents? Constitents send me all the time, there's this, and they're doing it more in Australia than anywhere else where they're actually, you know, that for that glow-in-the-dark stuff that you put on your shirt and stuff, they're actually put into the stripes on the roads.
Sounds interesting.
It looked good, but for all I know, it's, you know, a thousand dollars per foot, and that doesn't work.
Right.
Or it doesn't, you know, there's, as I explained to others, just because others are doing it, it doesn't mean that it looks good in a year. It doesn't mean that it doesn't come up because within a year because of the different chemicals we're putting in it. Things that are great ideas the first day are not always the great ideas five years later. So if we can just look at it.
Yeah, yep, we can check into that and bring back a report.
I think just to follow up on one item with the commissioner Nether mentioned, you know, with the ridge top and S R three, you know, it might be helpful if we talk to some of the some of the businesses up there to get their opinions, but also their support if there's an identified solution there so that DOT isn't just hearing from us, maybe. I mean, I perhaps it's falling on deaf ears because it's just us, you know, it's. So the other the other thing is, I don't know, Commissioner, when you when you had lunch with Secretary Millar a few weeks ago, I'm sure that came up, but if, you know, if you haven't memorialized everything that you had talked to him about and documented it with him, that might be a good reminder as well just to keep the keep it going. It just it takes it takes a while to get it takes a while to get DOT moving on some of these things, I think. But.
I agree with you. That's why I brought it up this way, because I don't think that they're standing our way. Matter of fact, Steve told us at the time, if we say that that's what we want, where we're going, that's why when the commissioner said that, it was such a huge event because he was just waiting for it not to be his fault. That's just an extreme on my part. But when I talked to Secretary Millar as well, safety, the man was all safety. And this was not an issue for him at all. He wanted to know what we're doing on it, and I didn't know how to explain it to him either. So that's why I said maybe it's the idea of putting together an action array so that we can go from this step to this step to this step and get the state to do it. Because I I think he even knew about it and was was expecting it to be done. That's what I got out of our meeting.
Yep, I will follow up after our meeting.
Thank you.
You bet.
All right, anything else for Loretta? Or Loretta, do you have anything else for us?
I don't believe so, commissioners.
All right. That'll do.
I love that movie.
Me, too. Watch it with my grandkids a lot.
Yeah.
All right, well, thanks, Loretta. And that brings us to Commissioner discussion and any updates to our calendars if we have any.
I don't think I do. I don't think I have any updates.
I did, but I don't remember what it was. So that doesn't do us any good, does it?
Well, and I don't have any either, so. I guess, how about a motion?
Move to adjourn.
I'll second.
We are adjourned.
Thanks, everybody.
See you guys later.